It is six thirty and a corp of the board is present. The notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Board of Human Rights and Human Rights Act, Texas Department of law, code five five one. Please stand as we. You may go away, pray. Heavenly Father, we love you, we thank you, we praise you for this day. We thank you for this district, we thank you for its students, staff, and our parents and our community. Lord Jesus, you are good and great and mighty and we just pray right now that you would lead this meeting, that you would guide this meeting, that you would help us give the board your wisdom tonight. God, I pray that you would just be with everyone, keep everyone safe at the football games tonight. Lord Jesus, you just be with us, we love you and thank you, it's in Jesus's name, amen. Pleasure's with us.
Let's lead to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the meaning, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Have one God.
Alright, thank you all for having me today. Just wanted to share with y'all some impact that the kids have made at other programs. Impact is a big thing that our district is focusing on. So, this is an email Mr. Bowling received and myself from an individual, from a away opponent. It says, May Pearl ISD Administration, I wish to share an event with you that touched my heart. On Friday, September twelve, two thousand twenty-five, prior to the May Pearl versus Cameron game, I was wheeling my eighty-five-year-old mother from the parking lot to the field. I unexpectedly got it caught in a pothole. At this time, your varsity team was walking to the field to begin their big game, or to the locker room to begin their big game. May Pearl football player number five, Tristan Brooks, came to my rescue to help me lift her out of the chair and get the pothole to where it could be wheeled again. He impressed me with caring heart and respect to an elder even during a time when he should be focusing on the upcoming game. It touched my heart as well as my mother's. Our world doesn't see this sort of kindness or gentleness manners from anyone, especially from our youth. As silly as it may sound, my mother and I both celebrated on the opposing side when number five scored a touchdown on the very first play. God bless those who show mercy to others. I am asking that you share this letter of praise with your staff, coaches, teachers, parents, and maybe even on the school website. I'm very proud of this young man and would love to sing his praise to his parents, friends, community, and the entire district. You guys are raising them right, with deepest appreciation, Yo Fan. So, just wanted to share.
Coach, thank you for your leadership with that, too.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't want to mess it up. Oh, I'm not putting anything up there, I just didn't want to squish these. Okay, so, middle school has the honor of recognizing a staff member tonight. As y'all know, we lost Debbie as our secretary. She is doing much better after having a stroke over the summer, but it was, it was a huge loss to our campus. She had been with the district for over thirty years. She will be coming to have lunch with me soon, but I was really, really worried about being able to fill her shoes. She did so much for the kids, for the campus, for the teachers. But we were very lucky to have come across Ms. Brooks and, as weird, weirded as it is, her son was just recognized for his kindness. She has filled a void on our campus and some of the things that the teachers have said when they nominated her pretty unanimously. She's done an amazing job since school has started, she's so bubbly and very welcoming to all, she's very helpful and dependable. Heather stepped into her role and hasn't stopped, been a team leader in helping everyone any way she can. Heather has come in and replaced a valuable, valuable person in our campus. I feel like she has exceeded the role in this position and totally filled a void in our hearts without Ms. Debbie. Heather is super positive and uplifting and she's always there for everyone and looking out for the staff and the students. I feel like she's on top of her job duties and is proving to do a fantastic job as an administrative assistant at MMS. She always seems to go above and beyond, always willing to help, and always so cheerful and fresh breath of air as you walk into the building, makes my day when I see her. And y'all, she's got the best customer service voice. When she enters the phone, she sounds like the, 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 the recorded voice, and it is so funny. So Heather, I would like for you to come up here.
You're too sweet, you make me cry.
Well, I already did. So I beat you.
Oh my goodness, thank you so much.
Picture.
Oh no, I hate pictures.
They make you cry, that picture.
Okay, wait, you have to stay too.
Yeah, you have to stay.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright, next up, we have the consent agenda. You want to make a motion to the?
Your motion to consent?
Good. Second. First and second, anybody get a discussion or questions about it? Alright, all those in favor? No votes? Alright, next up is the superintendent report. I've got the superintendent report, it looks like it's turned around a little bit there. But, so I'll just go ahead and read off the sheet here. Alright, so for the grade levels that we have right now, our campuses, excuse me, we have at the elementary, LSK Elementary, we have four hundred and eighty-seven students at that campus. At the middle school campus, we have three hundred and seventy-seven students, and our high school, three hundred and fifty-eight students enrolled. And then that brings us to a grand total of twelve hundred and twenty-two students total. Is that about what we were expecting? Is that about what we were expecting? I think it's about right, yeah. So, going into our finance report, I'm going to pull that somewhere sheet up. So, I wrongly said you would see this, you would see this sheet anymore, I made a mistake. You have August, so next month we'll have a new sheet. So, alright, so last year's budget was built on the eleven-thirty, our ADA was eleven, eleven-seventy-five, and then we ended on the six, six weeks there at one thousand eight-sixty-eight. You will see there at the bottom where it talks about our budget revenue realized was one hundred and nine. Remember, that's also considering, in fact, we had the loan amount that was in there, fifteen-eight, eight hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight seventy-three. And then there is the covered and expended amount, which was ninety-seven percent of the budget, which was fifteen million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, two eighty-seven. Where's the next sheet? We do the comparables from year over year. We were up one million, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, minus ten dollars. Five hundred and fifty-seven, seven eighty-one, and then I had, then you go on down. Down. You've got the expenditures was up one billion, four hundred, sorry, that was revenue, was up one billion, five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one. And then our total expenditures was one billion, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight twenty-five, was up. And then our child nutrition, they ended the year up, and as far as revenue, up thirty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. They were down as far as expenses, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three. Remember, we were spinning down some balances and things, but it looks like they may have just eked it out as far as breaking even or very close to even as far as that balance goes. Going over to the next slide, you can see there we have balance as far as the revenue left, as far as the bond is concerned, between three bonds, and expenditures to date, twenty-eight million, five hundred and sixty-eight thousand, eight ninety-nine. Down at the bottom, talks about arbitrage. So, we learned this week that we have achieved our limit in interest earnings. So, we earned the two billion, two hundred and seven, two point, I forget if I can say this right, two million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and so that is our, our amount that we're going to receive. So, anything above that amount as far as interest goes back to the US Treasury as far as how that works for bonds. And so, we're at our cap amount for the interest. Just want to make sure that you guys were aware. Alright. Questions? We'll go ahead and go to the campus improvement plans.
So, our thesis improvement this year focuses on four priorities. These priorities also align to the district's priorities as well. But LSK will ensure student growth, wellness, and post-secondary readiness by increasing our MAP meets data from beginning of the year, from twenty-two percent to end of the year to thirty-two percent, and increase reading MAP, uh, MAP meets data from beginning of the year to end of the year from twenty-nine to thirty-nine percent. In order to do that, we're going to check that our teachers are using and implementing district-approved resources, and we can check that through walkthroughs when we go into the classrooms, we can make sure they're using those resources, targeting interventions designed to close academic gaps through student intervention teams, we've got win time, and we also have after-school tutorials, and then empowering students to take ownership of their learning. Our grade levels are starting to implement some goal-setting with our, our students based on MAP data, based on unit assessments, based on STAR, and then taking ownership of their behavior. And we have a new, through our, the line bit, through the district impact, we have a new impact positive officer referral, where we announce them on the announcements every morning. Priority two, we'll enhance faculty and staff recruitment, retention, and capacity building. We'll increase teacher and staff recruitment and enhance staff training and capacity building through weekly grade level and PLC, a department PLCs. Every Thursday, our teams meet together either as a team or they're meeting with us. We just met today with all grade levels. And when they meet independently, they do have a PLC form that the grade levels use. We have designated professional development, we just had a classroom management professional development. Been partnering with Mrs. Votan, Mrs. Day, and Mrs. Wolf about looking at some other professional development opportunities for our teachers that we're noticing as we're going into the classrooms. And then also through some goal-setting with teachers for their professional goals. Partnering with PTO for monthly lunches, and they also do birthday for our staff. And they do like a gift card for the staff members, funshine committee. They do monthly lunches or, and/or an underground spirit day. And then our office staff has started to implement monthly treats. We have one coming up next Monday where we're doing an open house treat for them. And then we do have our new teacher mentor program. Priority three, sustain high levels of stakeholder satisfaction and engagement. We will provide open two-way communication with all stakeholders. We send a weekly parent square. It's LSK in the know every Sunday, that comes from the campus. And then grade levels also send communication, they've got Wednesday folders that they send home, and they also send home weekly emails through Parent Square as well. And a sender, parents have the opportunity to check a sender for their grades. And Facebook, we're working to increase Facebook, our activity on Facebook, and then we also put events on our district calendar. We do have our campus and district committees, we have our site-based decision-making committee, our district, our DCCM committee, which is the district committee, SHAC and PTO. And then we have parent nights, we've got Meet the Teacher, which we've already had, we have Open House, we had, we'll have Star Night in the spring. We have Career Cafe in the spring, and we'll have our Title One meeting, we've got two opportunities on Monday for that. We've got one scheduled for the daytime and one that's the evening time. And then we will increase effect, increase effectiveness and transparency of finance and operations. Every year, the end of the year, grade levels and departments come together, they look at what they, their needs are, they create a budget. I go over those budgets once they've submitted them and then at the beginning of, and those budgets are based on what their needs were the previous year.
Y'all have any questions about anything?
Any questions?
Thank you. I do. So you look, this is kind of a little bit different format than the last two years. CIP that we've done, where you have kind of like the mid, early year evaluation. How are we looking at, just looking back at the past, there's, seems to be we meet with them throughout the years, is that correct?
We do mostly collectively, they meet, they, they're on campus, but the evaluations of how they're going for each campus.
There's like a November checkpoint, a February, and then a May.
In that format, Mr. Cooper is through a program called Plan for Learning that we use, and we will continue to use that program, we, as far as our huge document, but this is, this is the one pager that we use to just present to you guys the highlights of that document.
Are you going to go into the, like the site?
The district, the district.
No, the site, decision committees?
So, this is, yeah, this is all based on the meetings that we had with our teachers. We have teachers on that committee, our classroom teachers, we have career professionals on that committee. We have district personnel on that committee, and we also have parents, community members, and like community business members on that committee.
What does that mean in terms of what are the, what's the, the topics?
So, we go, oh, these are, we go over each priority, and then we look at the performance objectives that are within those priorities and base them on our needs. So, at the end of last year, we looked at where we were, so we'll evaluate this throughout the year. And so, when we come in and we're looking at that first one, we focus that one on student success and growth and wellness, and we look at our MAP data, we look at some other programs that our counselor has in place, like the HOPE squad, and I didn't mention that, but we look at different things that we do on campus to see if they're working, if they are working, how can we make them even better? If they're not working, what do we need to do to change, how do we change that?
How do we document that? Is it just like a conversation, or is it, you type that out and say, I'm getting, well, you know, this, this particular program's not, it's not getting down to where we need to be? How does that, does the continuity work from six weeks to six weeks from last school year to this school year? How does that work?
It's, as far as, I'm sorry, this is really loud, do it.
Like the notes from your documentation, like do you document it and make notes to, so that there's some kind of continuity plan from year to year, or?
Yes, at the beginning of the year, like, so I print last year's plan, and when we all meet together, everybody has last year's plan and where we were at the end of the year, and we just mark it up and make notes, and we talk, we roundtable and talk about what's working and what's not working. At the end of the year, we look at our plan throughout the year, what was successful, what was not successful. We do a needs assessment so that we can make some changes for the following. Like last year when we met, we did a needs assessment to see what we needed to do for this school year.
That makes sense, I just, I got some copies of the last couple of years, and it shows like, you know, progress, but there's no like summary of what happened in those specific areas, so I was curious about that.
So that's formative assessments, I think is what you're referring to.
Yes, ma'am.
And so that happens three times a year. That is just something that the administrators on the campus just talk about and, and kind of assess. It's not a big formal meeting, and there's not an agenda, there's not people that come together. Big meetings are, like she said, the ones that have, just happen, and then the one that happens at the end of the year when they do the needs assessment for the, for the following year. And that needs assessment is, is incorporated and embedded into the, the plan for the, for the next year.
So that's, that's wholly on your plan? If I understand that correctly, it doesn't ever go back to you or to you?
We do have a district rep on our committee so that we do have input from not only just our campus, but from the district level.
I'm just trying to see how the work department.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, same thing, we've got our four, four areas. And from our SBDM meeting, we had a couple of areas that were a little bit more glowing and easier to target. So, MMS will achieve eighty percent approaches or above, and fifty percent meets or above in all tested subjects. And originally, I was going to target specific subjects, but I didn't want the focus to just be on them. I wanted everybody to be at the same mark. Because after a data dig that we did with Region Ten, we set some goals that are attainable that can go across the board for all tested subjects at the middle school. And I don't know if y'all realize, but the middle school is, we've got four grade levels, we're going to have eleven-star tests, one EOC, and star alt. So, the majority of the data is going to be coming from us, so we want that bar set for all of them. And, and by that, we're going to continue creating and growing student groups, offer increased participation of academic UIL, it has grown every year, those kids that are higher achieving, they need more things to challenge themselves. We're going to use data such as PLCs, walkthrough data meetings to strengthen, we want to strengthen that tier-one instruction. Ensure growth in core content areas for special populations by monitoring and evaluating progress, and observations, walkthroughs, and feedback with targeted look fours. We're going to let them know that these are the things when I come in that I'm looking for, so that it's not a guessing game. And then on the next area, MMS will increase satisfaction and engagement of all employees. And I chose campus pride because that was one of the areas in our, our survey at the end of the year, from seventy-nine percent to eighty-five percent as measured in the campus survey as agree or above. So that would be agree or strongly agree. So, we've partnered with our PTO, they are fabulous and they do so much for us on our campus. They do a monthly lunch, they, they stock our teachers lounge because, you know, Dr. Pepper took our drink machine away. But they put snacks and drinks in there, and they have been working on painting and decorating and organizing and making our teachers lounge a place that is comfortable for our teachers. We want to invite a lot of teacher and staff input when possible for campus decision-making. So at our staff meetings, I, I ask them, what's going, I need to know what's going on with you and, and how do you think we can fix the situation? We have a great teacher mentor program that, that regularly meets with our new teachers, not just our brand-new teachers, but also our new teachers to the district so that they can help them with all of our programs. We do a lot of staff activities and competitions. If you walk into the office at the middle school, you'll see a display of our Trash Moms, that was a fun day. And then we also do our monthly Woo Woo Wagon. My September Woo Woo Wagon, or no, I'm sorry, it was my October, my August one, was Clorox, Clorox wipes and hand sanitizer because everybody was getting sick and sick at home. So, every teacher got some of those items to help fight the, the germs. Now, the next one, MMS will provide open two-way communication with all stakeholders by increasing parent communication from sixty-two percent to seventy-five percent as measured in the campus survey as good or above, so there was good and very good, and I think there were three on that one. So, by that, we're involving parents in the decision-making process, trying to invite as many as possible to the SBDM. I will be sending several names to Miss Vos Hall this week for the district level, and then also our PTO, again, continuing to involve our staff in the decision-making process. And my goal, we haven't been logging volunteer hours, so we're going to start logging those hours so we have a baseline of how often our parents are coming in to help the middle school. And then we will be sending weekly newsletters through Parent Square. And then we will be sending weekly newsletters through Parent Square. And then with finance, of course, you know, we wanna explain and make sure our teachers understand how the budget relates to our organizational goals and challenges. And so we make sure that all budget requests align with the district goals and initiatives and make sure they're not buying things or trying to buy things that don't align with what we want for our curriculum. Any questions?
What's about the Woo Woo Wagon? I don't know.
So monthly, I take a, a cart and I fill it with something, whether, like I said, August, everybody came back to school and it was all the germs. So we had lots of Clorox wipes, lots of Lysol spray and lots of hand sanitizer and Kleenex. We filled it, went to every teacher and we deliver it. We open the door and say, woo woo. But most months, we try and make it themed, like we've done an apple nacho bar and we walk around and deliver it to them after they've had lunch, or an ice cream sundae, or floats, or something to just surprise them. And we involve the kids in that process too. We've got library aides that decorate the wagon and they help set everything up and they go with us to deliver to each teacher. It's pretty fun.
Thank you, Ms. Bob. Good question as well.
Yeah.
So you and Isbeck have been here for a few years, right?
Yeah, a minute.
And then we've done these every year, right? Do you see progress from these?
Um, in which area?
I don't care.
Um, as far as culture goes with, with the initiatives where we involve teachers, absolutely. I mean, we, middle school has a really good retention rate. And we have a lot of teachers that come and tell us how happy they are to be there and that they wanna continue coming back and that they come back because of the people that they work with. So most definitely, culture has increased at the middle school, especially from when I started. Because I think it was in a pretty bad state when, when I started my first year. This is my sixth year. We have good areas and you'll see from the middle school's MAP data, we've got some really, really good numbers coming across. Yes, we had some areas that were not positive last year, but we're also targeting those, those areas for, for personal and professional goals for those people. Figuring out where the hitch was and what we can do to improve it. Court, you know, we're always on budget at the middle school, I don't think we've ever gone negative. So I, I think that we've seen a lot of positive growth from where I stand anyways.
Just, again, I'd love the processes and things like that, I wanna make sure the process is...
Yeah, the data dig that we did the other day, a couple of weeks ago, was, was really, really good as far as accountability goes to help us drill down and, and make those goals and figure out where we needed to go. So I think a lot of the, the trainings and the programs that we have encountered each time, like the, the last accountability one, that gave us a visual that we showed to our teachers that created some aha moments, that they were like, okay, it's not as hard as it sounds. So continuing to go to these trainings makes a huge, huge jump in, in where we can help our teachers.
So when you look at like, I think while we have a lot of questions from a board perspective, when you look at a plan, right, it's a detailed process or a detailed step-by-step, how are you gonna get somewhere? And these, while these are good overviews, they're not detailed in a way. So we're wanting to know, what are y'all doing that is working for you? It's not, what resources you need to report? What can we do to help you? So that's, some feedback questions we ask just to where you're at.
Yeah, well, I, I did, after collaborating with upper admin, I made sure to tie my, like, a couple of them to our end-of-year campus surveying, so there's specific percentages. The first one was tied to our data dig, so that we had some actual numbers and something to refer back to.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
So getting into the first six weeks of school, crazy doc, we made it, right?
Did we though?
I think we did. But I know both, both LSK and middle school had a pretty big shift this year with moving campuses, with moving kids around, right? How have you seen with the kids being adjusted to it, the teachers and stuff? Because I know there's a lot of big testing, especially for middle school. Is that gonna help them with those testings and how they are acclimating?
Um, okay, so that's kind of a loaded question that, that hits multiple areas. So it, it's gonna be hard for LSK because there is a growth measure in accountability. And she's only gonna be able to measure growth from fourth graders because they took their first star test in third grade. So that big area of growth comes from one group of kids. It's gonna load me because I have so many grade levels and so many tests. So the proportions change, right? She is gonna have less star tests to administer, but like, there's, there's gives and takes, there's positives and there's negatives. But the, the fifth grade teachers, they're loving it. The fifth grade kids seem to be having a great time, they're loving having 30 minutes of PE every day and going to their electives and doing their rotations. And we've mitigated as much as we can with keeping the fifth graders apart from the eighth graders. Now, it's not 100%, of course, but they're on a different bell, bell schedule. I would suggest not to come to the middle school at, at lunch to see where a fifth grader is because we get confused on two bell schedules. But otherwise, I think everybody is really settled in and I've had a lot of positive comments from parents that they were apprehensive because there was no recess. But now they're like, okay, this is not so bad. And my kid is really, really liking the rotations and going to music and actually touching instruments and being in a, an art room with a certified art teacher and I...
So there's an element of freedom to middle school, a little bit more freedom compared to an elementary to some degree? That you're going to different things, some different things.
Right.
It just feels different, right?
It does, it does. And where the, the teachers are guiding them to every location, they still have this like joy on their face and excitement moving from, from one place to the next. And it's a little bit loosened than the, the elementary atmosphere. But like when the, the little fifth graders were on their NYA floats, they got so excited to see every staff member along the way and chunk their candy at us. And I, I think they're enjoying and acclimating well, but that's my biased opinion.
I got a little quick question, Steve kind of, I think, asked the same question earlier. But, so besides the middle of the year, you know, MAP data and stuff, what are we doing, looking at throughout the year to make sure we don't get to the next year and the elder in this work? You know what I mean?
Well, we do, we do MAP three times a year, but we're also, each of our teachers are giving unit assessments. And I have all of my teachers doing their assessments in Ediforia so that every question is tagged by the TEAC so that when we go into, say, an ARD meeting, the, the case manager can use that current data to write their goals and, and target where a student's weakness is. So those unit assessments help us keep current and where we need to, to spiral in, oh, 50% of the kids didn't, didn't get that TEAC from that, that test. So I need to take that, that TEAC and, and present it to them in an exit ticket or a bell ringer for the next couple of weeks.
So we're tracking stuff, I just didn't wanna say, hey, we're doing all this and then we get to the end like, oh.
Oh, we have so many data sources, it's ridiculous.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
We're going to the high school or?
Yes, I think it's up here and then I'll answer any questions that we have.
It's a video. James could be in today's video.
All right. Professor Anderson was gonna present the high school. Which is fine.
Reading members of the board, thank you for taking this time to hear my presentation about our Campus Improvement Plan for the '25, '26 school year at Lake Pro High School. At the conclusion of this presentation, Mrs. Cox will be available if you guys have any questions. If there are questions beyond that, I'm happy to take calls or emails as you guys request. The Campus Improvement Plan is as follows for '25, '26. So most of our goals are aligned, obviously to the priorities that we set. But also this year, we wanted to focus on ensuring that we are meeting standards and growth measures that will allow us to get a better or achieve a better rating as a school. And so objective number one is that MHS will achieve a minimum of 80% approaches and 60% meets or EOCs across all tested subjects. We are trying to closely align all of our tests with the standard that is being set and ensure that our students are aware of that standard as well. We're doing this through our POC process. We're gonna work through the data that we get for each of the different assessments. It starts with MAP testing and will ultimately culminate in our ability to benchmark test students. We are also working very hard on our observation and feedback process to make sure we're giving teachers an opportunity to receive feedback that helps them to grow as teachers. And we're also using multiple assessment data points, such as now benchmarking interim assessments. And we are increasing our parent-teacher communication so that parents are informed of how students will, how they can help students at home. This process will be done through open house, through some parent seminars that are in the works currently. Objective number two is to increase our retention rate by 10%. We are sitting, the last couple of years, we've been sitting right around 60% for our retention rate. And I understand that some of that is, you know, natural and it's attrition-based and, and some of those things. But we wanna make sure that we give our teachers an opportunity to feel the type of compassion that we want them to come back should no other extenuating circumstances arise. That means that our new teacher program, mentor program has to be robust. We have a great group of mentors this year that are already well on their way to helping our new teachers feel comfortable and feel supported. We are also ensuring that we offer a greater coaching and feedback model for our teachers as they teach, whether we wanna admit or not, teachers really do want feedback and they do want to be successful. We've also re-ignited our Positive Vibes Committee, which is formerly like our Sunshine Committee, that just kind of gives a few extra little things to, to our teachers when they're feeling down or when they may need one of those pick-me-ups. It's already been a significant help for us. And we're looking at ways to grow our employees and make sure that they have incentives to want to grow. And so that is currently in the works as well. As far as sustaining high levels of stakeholder satisfaction, we wanna provide open two-way communication. We wanna be able to communicate in so many different ways because not everybody communicates the same way. So we are trying to be very proactive in the way we communicate. We're currently working on our monthly newsletter for the month of October. We are also utilizing Parent Square as, as it is necessary. And we're trying to give parents and stakeholders some type of community representation so that they feel like they're a part of the process and can help us to plan certain things. We do endeavor to have the one academic night that I spoke about a while ago. We've also already had some parent nights through Mrs. Clayton, our counselor, those were very well received. And in fact, me and my district parents have talked about how, how well they were received within the community. And then we also just wanna be a presence at community events and actually create backstories, not just the ones from rest side duty, but we just wanna make sure that we are immersing ourselves in that community. Mrs. Cox is doing a fantastic job of, of doing that right now. And she's also kind of emerging as a person that, that can help out a lot down in the Ag Barn because, you know, she has some invested interest in, in the community and she has, has kids that need to do things down there as well, so she's been a great help for that. And then finally, we wanna just make sure that we utilize the budget to enhance our teaching resources. There's really no need to not utilize funding that we have to be able to help our teachers to achieve their ultimate goal, helping our students to be successful. We've already looked into resources that we can order as a district, but we wanna drill down to the campus level to make sure that our students, our teachers best support it in being able to support our students. So these are the four objectives, performance objectives that I have for this year's Campus Improvement Plan. Again, if you have additional questions or concerns beyond tonight, I'm happy to answer those as you guys request. Thank you so much for your time.
What questions do you have?
Did he do that, did he do that one take or was it multiple takes?
I'm not sure, I can't answer that one. I would guess, I would guess multiple takes, but that's just me.
Can you tell us about Positive Vibes?
Yes, I can. It's teacher-led, we give input and we're helping with it, but we, they do weekly shout-outs. So they send out an email at the beginning of the week and it's just a Google form. Staff goes in there and they just give shout-outs and then they send the email out on Friday. And it's really been fun to see who's appreciating who. On National Peanut Day, they came around with peanuts and sodas and gave us a free appetizer to Texas Roadhouse. They had got a, it was Texas Roadhouse peanuts. And so just trying to find ways similar to the, what was it, the Woo Woo Wagon? Okay, so things like that. I can tell you as a teacher, when I saw my admin come in with that drink cart, it was exciting. And so also letting the students see that we support our teachers as we come around, having the students, we have interns and stuff be part of that when we're coming around, it's exciting, so. It's the Positive Vibes, it's our Sunshine Committee. Also, if we have staff who has something going on, death in the family, rough time, maybe we need to organize a meal train, we can do that too.
Do you have a question about campus? We're a little over six weeks into no cell phones. What does that look like in your organization? Have you seen a change in student engagement or?
So wonderful.
Please come by at lunch and you will see a huge gain, different engagement, I guess, from students. But peer-to-peer, they're talking, they're communicating and in classes. They are engaged, we've heard from students that they're like, okay, this is good. So they're getting on board, they're buying into it, they're telling, I had a parent, I had a call who, you know, their kiddo's phone got taken up and they were like, hey, we're all for this and honestly, so is our kid. They have told us that they're more engaged in class. And so I think overall, it's going well. And so I think it's a positive thing.
Can I just interject one, just kind of feedback and brag on them? I think I've been, in the last couple of weeks, I think 17 walkthroughs with them at the high school and I have yet to see a cell phone now, not once. And in the works of my own son...
Yeah, they're okay.
Right. And in the works of my own son who is not a fan, not appreciative of law, but is struck with imagination. Quite frankly, we had a little bit of a disagreement about how long the law would last. But he actually admitted, which is, if you know him, is rare, that it's actually not so bad, that we actually, you know, I'm meeting new people that I haven't met before at school. And we actually talk a lot more in class with each other and with the teachers. So that, just as a side note, as a parent and an employee, I think they're doing a great job of enforcing that.
And, and just, you know, we have to be consistent. So the staff is being consistent and that's just what it's gonna take. And so at this point, when we get a phone, kiddos know the drill, you know, we're gonna call home and, and stuff like that. So it really is going well and I think it's great for our teachers, I think it's great for our students. And so I'm very happy we're through that first six weeks of kind of the growing pains of that. And so now we're just rolling. Any other question?
Yeah, can you tell me about the new teacher mentorship year? About how many people are in there and how many do they meet? How many?
Yes, I can. I would have to look at exactly how many teachers we have in there. I'm gonna say 10, give or take. And we have three or four mentor teachers. And so they meet with them, usually it needs, there's so many hours they have to log a semester. So they break it up, don't get me lying on how many, is it 15? Well, I, I was a mentor teacher, so I, I believe in the mentor program and she can chime in if I can.
I'm gonna have her back and she has been a lot to learn in all the things, but you're doing a great job as well.
Thank you.
So the mentor program is, is a district program that, that the, we added a mentor at the high school this year. So they have a total of three mentors who are phenomenal. They have met the mentors in our district who I met this summer to kind of revamp the program and recreate the manual and recreate the expectations and the timeline throughout the year. For these years, we have partnered with Region 10 and my first... And my first year in this position, it was phenomenal. And the second year, it was not phenomenal, is all I'll say. And then, so I really reassessed what we could maybe potentially do in this group and save a little bit of money, not a lot, but a little bit of money. And so, that's why we met this year, this summer and worked a couple of days to really get input from all of the mentors and create what the expectations are. The mentors are, there are, I believe, she's eleven mentees, so she's real close, on her campus this year. And they, they are assigned, each of the three mentors kind of are assigned specific mentees based on common conference periods, some of the approaches that these here can, you know, see them or maybe live content areas. And then, they have a timeline of things and checklist that they're supposed to kind of do check in with them each grade period. And I actually just scheduled meetings with all of the mentors to check in for the end of the grade and how we play, so that's not all on theirs. But to meet with them just to see how things are going and do checks, which we have not done before, but I wanted a little more accountability for the mentor and mentees alike. And so, and also to see what I could do to help support them, what the administrators could do to help support them. So, I'll be meeting with them in the next, to get them to all of them, it'll take two weeks. But just for feedback on how things are going and what are some needs that they potentially have. So, that's kind of, we'll do that each grade period.
And data shows us, when we look into it, that teacher turnover rate within the first three years is very high. It's a hard job and so, we want our teachers to feel supported. So, they're obviously supported by us, but when their mentors are not their evaluator in different things, they build good relationships with them and like grades and just the different things that they're not sure about, how to put in a discipline referral or how they might need help with a parent phone call or how to draft an email. They just have that mentor to just step in and help them. It's just an extra level of support that we can provide to our new teachers. Also, just maybe, how do things go here? Maybe I worked in a different district and I'm not sure about how to put a PO in or something like that. And so, just all the extra levels of support that we can give them. Yep. All right.
Thank you.
All right. So, what do we look at this time of year? We look at end-of-year MAP data last year, beginning-of-the-year MAP data this year, beginning-of-the-year M-class data, our kindergarten through second grade take M-class. And then, our spring 2025 STAR data for our fourth graders. And this is our beginning-of-the-year math MAP data. This is the achievement overview. As a grade, or as a campus for math, we were in the sixty-first percentile. And these, remember, these don't align to STAR. These are national norms. We'll look at STAR in just a minute. But about nine percent of our kiddos in math at the beginning of the year were in that first to twentieth percentile, so it's about forty kiddos. In the twenty-first to fortieth, fifteen percent, which is about sixty-six. Forty-first to sixtieth, twenty-six percent, which is about a hundred and sixteen. And the sixty-first to eightieth percentile, thirty percent, which was about a hundred and thirty-four. And then, eightieth or above was twenty percent, so that's eighty-nine students. And kindergarten through fourth grade do take math. Achievement by grade level, it's broken down where you can see our kindergarten grade level was in the sixty-fifth percentile. And then, I have it broken down for how many kiddos were in each of those percentiles. First grade, sixty-third, second grade, fifty-seventh, third grade, sixty-second, and fourth grade was fifty-sixth percentile.
Now, remind me again, is it, so let's say a first grader takes beginning of the year. Is it for where they should be at the beginning of the year or at the end of the year?
So, this tells us where right now coming in, where they should be coming in as a first grader.
I'm gonna say.
And then, it gives us a projection which we'll look at right now. It'll give us a STAR projection where they should be for STAR or where they're at right now. So, this is our STAR projection. It only does second, third, and fourth. There's not a projection for first kindergarten first. But right now, it's broken down. It tells you how many kiddos within each of those grade levels, where they're at. And then, you can see as a campus, right now, in the approaches grade level, we're in the forty-two point three percentage rate, twenty-one point eight for meets and five point two for masters. And this is where we correlated it to our Campus Improvement Plan. And then, our reading data, we're in the fifty-ninth percentile achievement overview and then it's broken down and it tells you how many kiddos as a campus. In the first to twentieth, it's about fifty-three. And the about is because the percentages are like point three or something like that. Sixty-one kiddos in that twenty-first to fortieth, forty-first to sixtieth is seventy-five. Sixty-first to eightieth is about one hundred kiddos and eightieth and above is about sixty-eight. And then, broken down by grade level. So, for reading, kindergarten does not take map reading. They take M-class. So, first grade is sixty-second percentile. Second grade is forty-eight, third grade is sixty-third, and fourth grade is fifty-six. And then, you can see how many kiddos were in each of those percentiles for grade level. And then, the projected proficiency for approaches, it breaks it down by grade level again for second, third, and fourth. And then, you can see the exact number. But for approaches, we're at thirty-nine point eight, meets twenty-nine point seven, and masters fifteen point seven. And I'm not counting the did-not-meets because we need to look at those. But when you look at accountability, like Ms. Bone was talking about, we don't look at that number because the goal is to move them up. So, we're focusing on our meets because that's where we want them to be. I mean, we're focusing on them, but we're wanting to focus on moving them up to meets. For, like I was telling you, our kindergarten through second grade takes M-class for reading. And this is, they do, they take an assessment. They do different breakdowns of tests. So, this is different than a MAP test. A MAP test, they're on a computer and they're answering questions, about forty questions. Some may be reading passages, some may be fill-in-the-blank, maybe looking at homophones or other various components of reading. For M-class, it breaks it down to letter names, letter sounds, phonemic awareness, decoding, word reading fluency, reading accuracy, reading fluency, error rate, and reading comprehension. And then, not all grade levels, kindergarten first, is tested on the same thing. So, I put, I told you here, what grade levels test what. So, kindergarten first, they do letter names. Kindergarten second goes letter sounds. Kindergarten first is phonemic awareness, decoding is kindergarten second. So, you can see the breakdown here. But they test all of these on, they're shorter timed tests. So, for kindergarten, it takes about a minute per test, per each of these tests per kiddos. For first and second, it does take approximately, it takes them about fifteen to twenty minutes to get through a full assessment with their kiddos. But it gives an overall grade for each component. And then, it sets, then it calculates all that and gives an overall composite score. And this is telling us, according to the overall composite score, where they've taken all of this and put it together, this is telling us right now where our kiddos are at the beginning of the year. They take this three times a year, just like we do MAP. And it's not within that same, it's a separate window. But it tells us that thirty-seven of our kiddos right now that took it were well below in kindergarten, thirty-four in first and thirty-five in second. Below sixteen, nineteen, and fourteen at fourteen, thirty-eight, and twenty-four. And then, above, that goal is twenty, nineteen, and fifteen. Science, our second, third, and fourth graders take science. And this is showing us where we're at right now as a campus. We're in the seventieth percentile. About twenty-five kiddos are in that first to twentieth, thirty are in twenty-first to fortieth, forty-two in that forty-first to sixtieth, sixty-seven in sixty-first to eightieth, and eighty-five and eightieth or above. And then, here's the breakdown for second, third, and fourth and where they're at. Second grade is in that fifty-eighth percentile, seventy-eight for third grade and seventieth for fourth grade. And then, that's the breakdown of kiddos in each category. And there is no STAR projected proficiency because we don't have a tested grade level on our campus anymore. So, what we're doing now, we've already had our MAP data meetings. Like I had mentioned earlier, our grade levels are already starting to conference with kiddos and do some goal setting. We actually just had a TCMPC calendaring PLC today. And that's where teachers are looking at their, you're at a glance in TCMPC and that's our curriculum. And that tells us what units to teach, when to teach, on how many days. It tells us our readiness standards, our supporting standards, what are directly taught in the classroom and what is something that is spiraled in. So, we looked at that today. And our goal was to look at this first semester, but we really got through just a couple of weeks with it because it's a big, it's a big undertaking. So, that's a work, something we're gonna continue to look at and do with teachers. We do have our targeted intervention through our student intervention teams. That's our tier one, our tier two and tier three kiddos. We do have what I need time tutoring. We have our fourth grade, high school, fourteen, sixteen kiddos and then our walkthroughs. And in fourth grade, any kiddo who didn't pass math or reading or both, they're required to receive thirty hours of accelerated instruction.
Okay, middle school. What are we looking at? Everything. We look at our MAP scores, last year's STAR, their grades, their unit assessments, RTI data, and special services data from either special education, ESL, and so forth.
What's RTI do?
Well, so, RTI is response to intervention. When a kid is not successful in tier one, then we have a meeting and move them up to tier. So, when we talk about tier one instruction, that's whole class. Tier two is that next, next level. We're gonna give them a little bit of something. And then, we have another meeting if they're not successful. Then, we give them more small group, one-on-one, and they get pulled out of a study skills class. So, here we have our math beginning of the year. We're in the fifty-seventh percentile. And like Randy said, this is on national norms. It's broken into five percentiles. We're looking really good because of only thirteen percent. We've got about forty-five students that are in that bottom percentile. And our lower area, the top is starting to grow with the more level with the meets and masters.
This is broken down by grade level. Grade five is at the sixty-second percentile. Grade six, forty-seven. Grade seven, sixtieth. And grade eight, forty-ninth.
All right, we're starting off strong this year with very small numbers in that bottom end. These are our projections for our four grade levels. For if they continue where they are without any interventions and at the end of the year, this is what they're projecting we would have. It's about twenty-seven percent not pass and seven point two masters, thirty-one percent meet and thirty-four point three percent approach. So, this is that area where the visual that I showed my teachers, we want to take ten percent of this group and move it here because these only don't count at all in accountability. The approaches counts once, so we want to move ten percent of those over because the meets counts twice. And then, we want ten percent of the meets to move over to masters because they count three times in our accountability and growth. So, that's where we have had that aha moment to figure out where to target our kids and how to move them. Okay, so, we've got our reading beginning of the year. Again, our bottom percentile is fairly low. Only thirty-eight students of almost four hundred are in that bottom percentile. There's the breakdown by grade level. Grade five, sixty-third percentile. Grade six, fifty-eight. Grade seven, fifty-second. And grade eight, fifty-six. And again, if our kids stay where they are and they stagnate and grow, this is their projection at the end of the year for about fifteen percent of the kids to not pass in reading. Thirty point five approach, thirty-three point four meet, and twenty-one percent master. So, our meets and our masters are looking really, really good for the beginning of the year so far. Science, we have a very high percentage at that top percentile group, eightieth and above. Overall, they're in the sixty-ninth percentile nationwide compared to the nation. And here's our breakdown by grade level. Seventy-second percentile in fifth grade, seventy-fourth in sixth grade, sixty-second in seventh grade, and sixty-sixth in eighth grade. So, you can see that top end is a lot heavier in science. And if they continue where they are, this is what is expected out of their STAR tests for grade five and eight. And what are we do, and I will pause before I say what are we doing. We've got two things that I think affected all of our campuses. When we did our MAP testing, we had some like internet and platform issues. And some of y'all may have had your kids come home and go, oh, I had to start over. Because on one of the days, we had to just give up because it wouldn't work. And so, we went back to regular schedule and then the kids did it again the next day. And then, we also were given a rubric by Ms. Botan that gave us like an accountability measure for our kids. And it was a rubric on, this is what you did while you were taking your test, you know? Were you working diligently? And it counted as a grade in that course or that subject. So, that rubric, I think, had a very good positive effect because they were actually getting a grade for what they were doing, not just sitting there, you know, hitting buttons. So, I think that my data kind of shows that positive of having that accountability measure tied to it, not just a random incentive. So, just surface level, what are we doing? Of course, we've got our high school, fourteen, sixteen tutorials during the advisory. We've got our kids broken up. They're getting thirty minutes a day, four days a week with that grade level and content teacher. We've got some targeted tutoring groups going after school. We're working on some teacher coaching with our new instructional coach. And we are increasing our walkthroughs among all of the other things that we do as well. Any questions?
Do you have a question?
Okay.
And I've kind of noticed it from LSK to here too, but science, we're high in science on both campuses, right? But lower in that and reading. But you would think in science, you have to have a lot of reading.
Oh, absolutely. The reading deficiencies affect across all subject matters.
But I just wondered about why. But I just wondered why we weren't doing good in reading. We probably would be doing good in science, but we're doing better in science than...
Yes, and that's a turnaround from, what, about four years ago, three years ago? Science was not very good at all, at least at the eighth grade level. My current teacher is, eighth grade teacher is rocking it. And you've got to think about, reading is tested at every single grade level. Science is only fifth and eighth. So it does kind of change the proportionality a little bit.
Fortunately enough for us is that these scores typically, because, now, eighth grade does really well as far as the picking, but some of these numbers, for whatever reason, it's not always a great. It's not always apples to apples in the sense of like...
Yeah, because this is nationwide, and our teaks in science changed, what was it, last year? In between the school years? So, I mean, for the two grade levels, it's projecting twenty-two point nine percent not to pass. But if you look at the national norms, these two grade levels need to be taken out, and that's a big number. So it's only these two, but fifth grade is performing pretty well. I've got my eighth grade science teacher partnering with my fifth grade math teacher to help with some alignment and some instructional strategies.
And we have always had a very deep focus on teaching science all the way through the grade levels because we have former science teachers. But, you know, we don't, there are districts that shortchange the science side of things, I think, for other areas. So I think that's why we do pretty well in that area as well. We make sure that we're doing that in all of us.
And this science teacher is one that I moved, flipped subjects a year, two years ago, or a year ago? I think this is her second or third year. She was a math teacher, but before that, she was a science teacher. So there's a lot of purposeful moves and purposeful coaching and strategies involved to help put people where they fit better.
I actually have a question on top of that. So we approved a new science curriculum last year, I believe.
Step school, sorry. Oh, HM.
Is that helping? I mean, it seems to be based on raw numbers, but I'm just asking, do you guys feel that it's helping?
Well, so here, let me go back to that. So when we knew that the science teaks were changing, my science department came together to try and analyze and unpack that, and they were part of the picking. I think definitely the curriculum has helped, but I also like really researched to find, like when I taught math and the math teaks change, I did a training where they had us unpack and know where the teaks moved and slid and went in different directions. And it was pretty eye-opening. So Region Ten had a training, but it was one day for grades six through twelve. But I found, what's the one I went to, was that twelve? Region Twelve had a two-day training for the science teaks, but it was only six through eight. So I sent them to that, so it was more targeted to their grade level, and it was longer and more in-depth. And I think that that was one of the greatest benefits for them because they spent so much time unpacking and understanding where the movement happened.
And I do believe that materials are helping, and I can say they're being used, which is a big feat, quite frankly, but the fact that they had, they were the ones that said, that's what I want, you know, I think that's a big component to actually using it. And so I have seen, that is one of the subject areas that we consistently see the content that we've purchased recently being used. And the fact that the alignment with when it was purchased, and that's not us to say it actually because, but when it was purchased because of the new adoption, and then the new teaks were pushed down, the fact that it all happened at the same time was a lot for science teachers at that time, but it also helped because it was on the radar, and they had to look at it all at once. And so it helped with the implementation of the actual materials because they were looking at their teaks to see, you know, what it was that they needed to be using in these materials. I also think it's worth noting to you guys that science is a little bit unique in that the star-tested subjects, like for fifth grade science, that is a cumulative K through five test. And so while reading is a test where you have to be able to read and build on those things every year, the teaks are specific to that year. There are teaks that are, or questions that are asked on the fifth grade test that are maybe only be actually implemented in kindergarten, or implemented in third grade, or implemented in, and the fifth grade teacher and the eighth grade, they have to do really, they have to do their teaks, but then they also have to make sure that they've covered and spiraled those teaks before because if, and that's why Mr. Bowling said, we really have a push across campuses for science. Not that other districts or that we haven't done science, but some districts was like, well, this isn't a tested subject, or this wasn't, you know, they don't do that till fifth grade. But the ownership of the teachers to say, when that fifth grader sits in that class and takes that star test, those questions, questions seven, nine, twenty-four, and thirty-eight are on you, right? And so them knowing the test questions or the teaks that were asked on previous years for them to be able to go, oh, those are my responsibility. And so I know there was some vertical teaming last year, but I think the alignment of the resources helps with that too. So I do think it's going well. I mean, time will tell, you know, whether they readify you or she's the true predictor, but I do think it's all...
I think science is going really well. My question, the reason for the question is what are we doing in science? Can we do something in the other, the other courses? But the way you explained it, it's not apples to apples test, so that's the answer to my question.
And I think with science labs, that's going to just take our...
Well, and the materials with HM, they came with kits, or we purchase extra kits for a lot of labs. And there's a lot of consumables within those kits to do those labs. I mean, there's molding clay, there's sand, a book room is full of kits for each unit. So they're getting a lot more hands-on stuff.
You guys approved and allowed us to purchase all the things, right? And so it wasn't just the digital, it wasn't the books, it was the manipulatives, it was the kits, so the teachers weren't having to go buy the stuff themselves. So I think that has been very beneficial as well.
Okay, so I'm here to talk about the high schools' MAP data. So what does MHS look at this time of the year? Obviously, we're looking at MAP data. Really also working with our teachers about how to read data, what does this mean? How do we look through it? There is a process to that. We want to look at our previous EOC scores, where we sat. We want to improve, y'all hurt our goals for next year, and so we need to look at where we were, and we need to try to get a plan together. We use data to drive any plans that we are making. We also want to look at our six weeks' grades. It's important for me that our grades reflect students' mastery. And I've been telling our teachers that. Sure, we throw in some hundreds in completions for things that we're doing, but it should truly match where they are. As a parent, I want that, you probably would want that as a parent, so you have an accurate representation of where they are. It helps us also know where we need to fill gaps. We're going to do test data through PLCs. I love PLCs, and so really trying to develop a process that is good for April High School, what that looks like, how we did it last year, how we can grow it, and how we can build it. And then our walkthroughs. So Tal was just saying, we've had lots of people come do walkthroughs with us. We're trying to do collaborative walkthroughs. Me and Mr. James are trying to get in classrooms together. Of course, we go separate, but that way we can collaborate on the things that we're seeing and bring it back to the table about how we can improve. All right, so first thing is Algebra One. So for our ninth grade students, we were in the thirtieth percentile. We had a few students in the eleventh grade, and they were sitting at the twenty-fifth percentile. When we look at it kind of broke down by grade level with our test, we're at fifty-one percent approaches. Here, we have fifteen point two percent did not approach, four point five for masters, and then twenty-eight point eight for meets. I like what Kim and Martha said it earlier, but the goal is to make this number go down. Okay, so looking at ways that we can do that and support our students and our teachers.
So when we look at that grade level, not grade, we've got eighty-eight kids. How many kids are tested?
So we had sixty, so that's a good question, and I was going to address it, so I'm happy you went ahead and brought it up. So math, they can take Algebra One their eighth grade year if they're on the kind of advanced or accelerated track. So we really worked, we collaborated, and we were extremely intentional of what MAP test we wanted the kids to take. The science and the reading, it's there. But with math, we wanted it to mirror the EOC they're going to take. So again, we can have as much of an accurate representation. So when you see some of those numbers a little bit smaller, I worked with Ms. Botol, had a little committee when I was planning for MAP, and we all came to that decision of let's try to match them as closely to their EOCs. I think we did a really good job of matching that. I think we'll get better systems in place just to continue to make sure it's as accurate as it can be for kiddos. But when you do see some of those numbers that are a little bit smaller, that's the reason why. Did I answer that good for you? Okay, so Algebra Two, we were in the thirty-second percentile. So we had sixty-one kids who took that test. And then with our geometry, you can see our ninth grade kiddos were in the sixty-seventh percentile. Our tenth grade kiddos were in the forty-fourth. And then our eleventh grade was, we have an eighteenth percentile here. Now, that was nine students. So when you, you know, that can really have a weight on that category when the number is a little bit smaller. All right.
And there's, just for record, there's ninety-two students in that salt.
So here we have our English test. Our ninth grade, we're at our fifty-sixth percentile. Tenth grade is sitting at the sixty-fourth percentile, and eleventh grade is sitting at the fifty-fourth percentile. For me, this was a really good achievement for April High School, also because just the systems we put in place, which I'll talk about here in a second, and the way that we gave the test, and the way we planned for it, and the number of kids that were tested. I did a little bit of digging at where we were the year before, and so I think this is a great representation of the kiddos that were tested, and we can really see that. So here, when we're looking at our projection, we have fifty-three percent kids in meets. We have nineteen point two in approaches. We have eleven percent in did not meet, and then we have fourteen percent in masters. So when we look at these numbers and did not meet, obviously, we are going to work to try to close that gap, but in the tenth grade, it's counting two students. So tenth grade's doing great. Okay, so we've got work to do, we want to make sure we're helping all of our kiddos, but that is a positive. Biology, so we are sitting in the sixtieth percentile there. And here you can see our projection. Approaches, we're at thirty-one percent. Meets, we're at fifty-seven percent. Masters, we are at ten percent. And did not meet, we're at one point two percent. So again, that's great, kind of goes along with the science trend. I think we're doing really well there. So what are we doing? We are planning, obviously, for house bill fourteen, sixteen based on the data and making sure that we have a good plan for that. We're doing backwards design to ensure that all teaks are covered, meaning we're identifying specific learning goals based off the teaks and planning there. We're doing collaborative walks, I kind of discussed that. We've got district personnel coming in, but we're also trying to work together as an administration team of what we're seeing, talking about what we're seeing, going in together when we can. PLCs for our core content, again, trying to make sure our PLCs are as effective as possible. Specialized course for remediation, we do have a reading class. So there's certain criteria that if kids need additional support with reading skills, we have that class available for them. Other things that just really aren't there, but talk about, we want to make sure we're maximizing our instructional minutes. That's a goal for us, that we're being as effective as we can. I think our testing process went really good this year. Couple of y'all watched through that day we were doing MAP testing. Y'all saw me running around my clipboard and making sure things getting going. But I think it went really well, so I'm proud of us. We talked though, we'll always try to kind of see where we can grow, but I think we did really well. We taught our kiddos about the test, just, they know it, but just reiterated the importance of it, what it gives us, what it gives them, and they really took it really seriously, and I'm very proud of them. We had lots of kiddos kind of taking this, I was really proud of how they took it serious and put a lot into it, so that's great. And that also goes to our teachers, our teachers, you know, talking to them and informing them and letting them know what this test is for. And then I think also, what we're doing is we're getting to know our kids and what they need. Each kid's different. We have a wonderful opportunity with being a small district to try to know our kids as well as possible and just try to help them with where they need. Each kid's different, so that's something that's very important to me and our team, that we just get to know them, our teachers get to know them, and we try to be as intentional with what we're doing as possible. Questions?
So you're new.
Yes.
How do you feel? How's your first month and a half going so far?
It's great. I, this has been a huge goal of mine to step into this role, and so so far, I feel fueled. I feel very supported by everybody in this room. I asked lots of questions, and, but it's going really well. There is something very unique and special about this district, and I just feel blessed to be a part of it and get to work with the teachers and the students and the staff. And you have a really great opportunity to make a big impact at this size. I loved my other district, it was just really big. And so we did make impacts, and we did help kiddos, but I think there's really something great about here, and so I feel good. Thank you for asking.
We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes?
Also, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to go into bond update real quickly. You've got a copy of the leaving your folder, but you can see there the construction contingencies. I won't do all that for you, but you can see that we are heading deep into the second phase of construction, so you can see the pictures there. I was told today this, that the cafeteria looks nothing, you wouldn't even recognize it at this point. They're about to start next week, is my understanding, bringing in new steel so that they can start getting the supports for the air conditioning system that would be supported in the culinary area. And then as you can see there, all the things that are happening, changing out some of the electrical and whatnot, getting all of those things ready, they'll start pouring concrete after that. And then once the concrete piece is taken care of, then we'll start seeing some framing and walls going in and those kind of things. So this side of the project, once the concrete and the electrical, you know, those kinds of stuff, you know, it, it can move rather quickly. So, but they've been moving pretty quickly as far as all of those pieces. We've actually, I talked to Chris Wilson, he works for the Gallagher today, and we're supposed to visit tomorrow about putting together a timeline as far as a punch list for the other projects and working with Plakem. So we'll be getting together on that as far as, over the next two weeks, going around punching out the other two buildings. So there's still some things to get done. The high school, obviously, has got several things as far as finished pieces and things like that, and I'm sure the middle school has some things as well. But I know that the high school, there's some very visible things that I've noticed just walking around. So they're looking at, just so that you know, they put a massive, I'm not trying to call it, a projector. And so what was called originally is not, they do not feel like that's going to be enough support. And so they're looking at doing something different as far as cutting into that wall and doing something to where they can really support that projector to make sure that there's not going to be any kind of issue, obviously. And so that may require them to come in like over fall break and get that done when there's not anybody around. And so that, that may uh, require them to come in like over fall break and get that done when there's not anybody around, uh, so they get that done. And then I know that uh, there was an ask today about doing something else. I'm sorry, it just escapes me, but uh, they wanted to do some, something else that was gonna require that nobody else was around. And then, and so we decided to do that on the fifteenth, because that was requiring shedding down some power, I believe, or whatever. So anyway, they're, they're moving along, um, and um, we'll, we'll get that punch list going and hopefully get some of those other things that I stated as far as the Phase One, and then the, or what I'm calling Phase One, the high school, those four portions of add-ons. And then uh, the Phase Two side of it will be in the cafeteria uh, renovation. We're supposed to be taking possession of that sometime in November is what we're shooting for. Come from there. Any question? Oh, so I'll go into the next thing. Uh, we need to call a special meeting uh, after the Vator. Uh, it's for uh, November the thirteenth, when we were looking at dates, that is the best possible date to canvass an election. Well, have you come up with something? Good. Alright, any questions on tax payments?
To. Um, the water, I think I mentioned last month, we spent a thousand dollars the for this, from July to August. Again, I'm nervous, so I'm gonna make sure we fix the leak, and then concessions and I've got that portion, it's been about three hundred dollars of the water there, so.
We don't know any leaks whatsoever.
Yeah, I mean, when we had mentioned that, back when we first discovered the high bill to Jim, he was reaching out to the city. I was glad when he was still here and they had not discovered any kind of leak as to why that water bill.
And when I talked to. They just appeared to all of our other meters, no one was anywhere close to that, so.
You know, when I talked to Gallagher, when we looked at some things, they actually really looked along that, you know, like trying to look for areas where there may be drip water, maybe finding things that showed any signs of any kind of leaks and those kinda things. The only other way to do that, I guess, would be is if we were to just um, scope lines or turn off the problem. Yeah. So um, you know, I, I think over the break, that might be something that we could possibly do.
But as of right now, there's not been any water leak. It's already running out. You know, you know, some water coming out in front of that problem.
Right. Any other questions?
That's a lot of water.
Well, I think, I mean, just. Yeah, just, I mean, our May Pearl water structure's not a lot of volume, so.
I'll give it to Kirk tomorrow, just to investigate and find out. Alright. So we've got some discussion action items. Uh, consider approving the twenty twenty five voter approved tax ratification election efficiency audit.
Yeah.
Hey, before we get too far down the road, if the principals and admin wanna go all the way forward, then welcome to not have to sit through the rest of this. We love y'all. We appreciate your time. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, trustees. Superintendent Bowling, I'm here tonight to present the results of the efficiency audit that we completed. Uh, the efficiency audit is required by Texas Education Code. The purpose of this efficiency audit is to provide voters with information on the district's utilization of resources, efficiencies, uh, and fiscal management before adopting or voting on a uh, action to increase the maintenance and operations property tax rate. The guidelines for this efficiency audit are set by the state's Legislative Budget Board. Uh, the guidelines include what data has to be compiled on the district and the peer districts, uh, what information has to be included in the report and the format. Uh, it also identifies the tools to use to identify the peer districts that are included in the report. And we've used those tools uh, in order to identify uh, those peer districts. The two tools that are identified are the Texas Education Agency's Snapshot Peer Search, and there's a database maintained by Texas A&amp;M called the Texas Smart Schools. So using criteria that's similar to the district, we identified these six uh, districts to include as your peer group for the purposes of the analysis that's included within the efficiency audit report. Characteristics that are taken into consideration include the district's size, the district's tax rate, uh, the community type, uh, the property wealth of the district, as well as the criteria utilized by the Texas Smart Schools. Beginning with the next slide, we start going through the highlights of the report. Again, the information that's required to be included in this report, and we start with the latest A through F accountability rating. For May Pearl, the latest rating is twenty twenty five, which was a C. Uh, that represented a score of a seventy. When we looked at the six peer districts, their average was a B or an average of an eighty-two. Looking at the district's financial accountability, uh, the school, what's referred to as the school first rating. Uh, the school first rating for the latest available information based on the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year uh, was a superior achievement or A. That's the highest rating that can be achieved uh, in the school first uh, rating scale. For the latest fiscal year that audited information was available, uh, May Pearl reported one thousand two hundred and twenty-four students. The peer district average was one thousand one hundred and seventy-one students. And then you look at those student population groups that generate a, a variety of different funding. Economically disadvantaged, uh, your peer districts had a greater number of economically disadvantaged students at five fifty-nine compared to May Pearl at four eighty-eight. Uh, that, for English learners, that was a hundred and four compared to sixty-eight. Special education was uh, very similar, a hundred and eighty-nine students compared to two hundred. Uh, May Pearl did report a greater number of bilingual ESL uh, students at a hundred and two compared to sixty-six. And then career and tech, technical education was also an area where May Pearl reported a greater number of students, four hundred and ninety-three compared to three hundred and eighty-five. That same information on a percentage basis is presented on this slide. Uh, economically disadvantaged is, is the greatest uh, disparity here compared to the peer districts and the state. Uh, English learners, uh, bilingual education ESL, very similar, special education, pretty comparable to the peers and to the state average. And then career and technical education is an area where the district did have greater number of students compared to both the peers and the state. Looking at total revenue per student, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, May Pearl reported thirteen thousand two hundred and nine dollars per student. And that breaks down into the following categories of local, which is obviously driven by your maintenance and operations tax rate. State funding is the, the greatest category there, seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars per student, followed by federal funding and miscellaneous local revenue, which is primarily your, your interest income. Uh, you can see there that that is less than your peer district average. Those six peers reported an average of fifteen thousand seven hundred and nine dollars per student compared to May Pearl's thirteen thousand two hundred and nine. Biggest difference there is just the local M and O uh, revenue there. The dish, the peer districts reported five thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars per student. May Pearl was at three thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, uh, May Pearl's tax rate was a little under just eight cents less than your peer districts on average, whi- which is pretty significant, because just one cent of property tax. Uh, the tax rate generates a lot of revenue, and May Pearl's was around seven point eight cents less than the peer district average. Uh, looking at how the expenditures uh, are, looked, looked for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, April overall, uh, expended twelve thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars per student, less than the peer district average of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars per student, and less than uh, the state average of twelve thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars per student, so. You have less revenue, so it, you know, pans out that you're also spending less per student. On the next slide, we kinda show how the different functional categories, uh, using these same dollars, but on a percentage basis. Um, you know, instruction, instruction-related services, that's functions eleven, twelve, and thirteen, uh, in your budget. Uh, just under fifty-three percent of your total expenditures are expended uh, in that, that category. Instructional and school leadership, that's twenty-one and twenty-three, functions twenty-one and twenty-three. Seven point four percent of your expenditures are in that category. Uh, seventeen percent student services, so think of transportation, uh, child nutrition, uh, guidance and counseling services was seventeen percent for May Pearl. Four point nine was general administration, kind of the, the jump overhead of, of the district. And then planned maintenance and operations was eleven point six percent for May Pearl. And you can see how each of those categories compares to both the peers and the state. You do have uh, a few percentage points less on the instruction, instruction-related services. Uh, when you look at the detail in the report, uh, you do have, you make up for that in, in the student support services. There's about two percent difference there. Four point nine on the general administration, very comparable to your peers, where you're at four point eight. And that's uh, function forty-one, kind of the, the overhead of the district. The biggest portion of your budget is, is salaries and benefits. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, that represented seventy-seven point eight percent of your expenditures. Uh, very, exactly what the state average was, and a, a little greater than the peer district average, which was seventy-five point six. Average teacher salary, uh, a little more than the peer district average, uh, by a, just under two hundred dollars. Percentage of teaching staff was forty-eight point three percent. That was less than the peer district average, where a percentage of their total teaching staff was fifty-four percent. Uh, students per teaching staff, thirteen point four at May Pearl, a little less at the peer district average, and then overall, students per total staff, six point five from April, six point eight for the peer district average. The LBB guidelines require that information be included on your unassigned fund balance. Unassigned fund balance is what you end your fiscal year with, resources available to continue into the following fiscal year. Fund balance is not your savings account. That's your, your working capital. That's how you operate uh, in the months, the first few months of the next fiscal year until you start generating uh, the collections from your property tax. So it's important to have a adequate fund balance uh, in order to operate the district those first few months of the following fiscal year. A huge disparity here between May Pearl and, and the peer districts. For the most recent fiscal year, your peer districts reported over eight thousand dollars per student in fund balance. Uh, May Pearl was at two thousand three hundred and seventy-eight dollars per student. And that held true for the previous four fiscal years as well. Now, school districts can assign fund balance and commit fund balance. What that means is that you earmark amounts in fund balance, either by management that's assigned or by the board that's committed. So on the next slide, I, I do include all those components of fund balance to kinda give a, a truer picture of all the fund balance that is under the district's control for the most fiscal year, uh, recent fiscal year audited information. Now, the peer district fund balance per student jumps up to nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars per student, while still May Pearl is just over four thousand dollars per student. Then you can kinda see what that looked like for the four previous fiscal years, so. Overall, May Pearl receives less revenue per student, especially in the M and O category. You expend less per student, and you have far less fund balance per student compared to the peers. I'd like to thank uh, Superintendent Bowling, uh, Mr. Boone. We've been working on this report over the last couple of months, asking for a lot of information, a lot of follow-up questions. Uh, their support and their cooperation is greatly appreciated, uh, because we wouldn't be here tonight discussing this report uh, without their assistance. So I do, I do wanna thank the district and, and the administration.
Question, if I can ask one. Is there data on the peer districts of who of those have gone out for a Vator? Do we know that for these peer districts?
So of, of the six, the LBB guidelines don't wa- include that in the report, but I did look that up. So four of the six have gone, called for a Vator election.
Did they win those, or how many, do you know how many pennies, what they got, or anything like that?
I, I don't have that information.
I noticed in the report, like, it does reference, uh, the Vator was generating six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and our budget was built on, I think, seven fifty, so we're thinking that was gonna get.
That was original projections from kinda that John Walsh guy that he was coming up with, but.
So we're already making adjustments for that, because obviously the report does say, hey, even with this, you're gonna have to make some new cuts to make that budget balance for current fiscal year.
Well, I mean, the budget that we adopted is balanced based on the adopted tax rate with the Vator included.
Okay, so we feel like that's gonna be enough, then? I'm just trying to get that disparity, the seven fifties, what I've got in my head from that.
Yeah.
Versus six twenty-five, so I'm going with.
A little bit of that comes from the, uh, we're not, so from our no, new, our, our voter-approved M and O rate, it actually came in to point six one six nine, and then you add on the five pennies that were previously approved. And what we originally had proposed was six one six four, so there's point zero 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 five, you know, pin, or percentage of a penny that we're knocking down, so instead of three cents to the M and O, we're adding point two nine five.
That's it.
So there's a little tiny percentage from that that, you know, is playing into this as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we take a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five voter-approved tax ratification election efficiency audit. Discussion. Alright, next up, it's your approved recommended library books and materials list for purchase.
You read every single book, right?
I did, every single line. Did y'all? This is the shortlist. That y'all just got. The longer one came later. Yeah. Um, okay, well, first I, I made copies. It's like the cheat sheet of SB thirteen for y'all, and then what we're doing to comply, way easier than the actual, so, you know, yeah. I, I mean, I don't really have a presentation or anything. I just, if y'all have questions, um, I mean, I can talk to y'all if you have questions. I don't know.
The process, do you mind just kinda mentioning?
Sure.
The process.
So for.
The new law requires that this gets posted for however many days, and then you have a committee.
Right, okay, so, so the process of like the, what y'all are voting on, I guess, the titles, um, SB thirteen says that um, for any new purchased uh, book titles, and I think it says materials on the, on the agenda. It's not materials. It's just book titles. Um, we have to come up with a list for y'all to be approved, so it has to be posted thirty days. You have thirty days to look it over and then approve it. Um, so you can't just, um, a kid can't just come in and be like, I want this book, and then I'm like, okay, cool, I get it. Um, now it's a slower process, which of course is a double-edged sword. It's safe, but it's, um, makes it more of a challenge to get um, materials quicker, or not materials, but titles quicker, so. Um, essentially, I look at, the list that y'all have now is like Texas Award winners, so it's like the two-by-two, those are for like K through uh, second graders. The Texas Bluebonnet Award list, that's for like third through fifth grade students, and there is the Maverick Awards, there's the Tisha Awards, that's so. Um, and I think there was another one. I, it doesn't say on there what they are, but so that's like middle. And I think there was another one, it doesn't say on there what they are, but so that's like middle school winners, high school winners. There's the graphic novels winners. And so I went through the list and I didn't pick every single one of them. So part of that is, those awards are not picked by necessarily like educators, it's the library world. So because of SB thirteen, we have to look at what would be considered like maybe offensive or rocking the boat a little bit in our district. And so I went through and read reviews for those books and put them on the list for things that I felt would be a good fit in our libraries, for our students, for our population and community. So that's the list that y'all have to be approved and just gets posted on the website. I've been talking to Cory like way too much, I'm sure he hates me, about getting that on the website. It's posted at the admin building, it's posted at, each campus has their list. And, let's see, I guess, did that answer, did that give you the details you want?
So if we approve this, it's posted for thirty days?
It's already, that one has been listed. There's another one that got posted, I think on Tuesday, because that's thirty days before your next meeting. So this would be, if you approve this one, I can go ahead and purchase these now and get them in the library for the kids.
How is this process of emailing checked books to parents, how does that work?
It's been super fun for Cory. So we have our library system, it's called Destiny. That's where, you know, when the kids, when the students come up to check out books, that's where everything is, that's our catalog, everything's in there. So when they check out the book, there's a barcode, it gets scanned, then we know, you know, Sloan Sewald has this book. So part of the law is that parents, essentially this law, a lot of it is power to the parents, right, which is great. So this law says that parents need to know what their students are checking out. So essentially, now we have it set up, thanks to Cory, and a lot of time spent on this, I think. Where as soon as it gets checked out, later that day, a report is run and it sends out an email to parents. So also, it, there was a learning curve with this because I think emails were getting sent out like seventeen times a day a couple of weeks ago. That has been resolved.
Yeah, so one of the things that we tried to do is to meet the letter of the law by the time that it was required.
Which was like a month after, yeah.
But we also got a longer list than was necessary at the time too, and then it happened too many, too often. But we knew that we were working through a more refined process. That is now in place as of this week, which again, just sends a daily email that only includes things that were checked out that day. So that's all automated, so that parents will be able to do that. In addition, parents will have a place to be able to go on at any time and look at the list of books the kids have checked out. And they can even go in and, what's the word?
Block.
Block a kid from checking out certain books.
Only their kid.
So that was in place as of yesterday?
Yeah, I think like Tuesday.
So we have information on the website, but that will also be sent out by Parent Square in the next couple of days.
Yeah, so, okay, so this is also, it's been really helpful that I have kids in the district because I've been able to see it, like, we've played a lot with it with my own kids as like the guinea pigs. So essentially, you know, say my Lincoln has library on Wednesday at LSK. So on Wednesday at four o'clock, I know I'm going to get an email saying, you know, he's checked out Who Would Win book, or whatever it is. And it tells, it'll show like the picture, like a photo of the book and the title and the author. So then if they want to go into Destiny, if the parent wants to go into Destiny, they can go and look up the information about what that book is, or they can get online and look up the book. And then this other part that Cory is talking about is a different link where you have access only to your students. So you, and it's all in one place, I have three kids here, I can see all three of my kids, what they've checked out recently, like what they currently have checked out, I can look at all their history of what they've checked out. And then there's also a button where you can block. So I can say, this is really going to be helpful actually at the middle school level because of having young adult books with our fifth graders, which has been, I've been like camped out at the middle school for that reason, because of all the implications of that. So say that Adam doesn't want Lily checking out, I don't know, Scythe. And so he can go on there and he can type in that title, it'll come up, he can click block. And so when Lily comes in and she comes up with Scythe and I scan it, or Robert scans it, it won't let her. It'll pop up an alert and say, the student is not allowed to check this book out. So it's really also beneficial because say, you know, Jeremy doesn't want his kids reading Harry Potter. Other people still get to read Harry Potter, just not his kids.
We've gotten the emails and my wife, you know, reviews the books, there's been some that were, hey, take that back. We're not going to read that one. So I'm sure they'll get blocked and we won't have that problem anymore and move on. I think it's working pretty good.
Yeah.
Is there a way that we can educate the parents about how to do that?
We, so this is very fresh and actually, yes.
So we've created some directions for parents that we'll be sending out through Parent Square. It's already posted on our website, but that happened as of today. So we're prepared to be able to roll that out to parents, but that's coming in the next couple of days.
And there will be also, like, we're working, we met today to talk about library websites. So there will be, it'll be clear on the website, you know, it'll be clear to be able to figure out how to go into Destiny and look up titles in Destiny and how to get to, I don't know what it's called. The, I keep calling it, it's like the square thing.
Basically the parent portal, I don't know.
I don't, I don't know a name for it, but essentially, there, it will be very clear and easy to get to.
And just so you know, the website for the library services is already up there. As of this afternoon, all that information is available, so in your spare time. I'm sure you'd want to peruse through the library section, which is short right now, and will be expanding, but at least that information is available.
You want to read one? Oh, yeah.
Maybe it's still something we could get this bridge to put something else, you know, to kind of say, hey.
Oh, like on social media or something?
So what happens if we find, let's just say, a book that slid into circulation that we see not fit? What's the process of pulling the book?
Yeah, so there is a whole library policy and there is a process, like a challenge, so that's called, it's called like a challenge. So, or, yeah, so basically, you, it'll, it's written out online on the policy for the school district. And it would be, a parent would fill out a form, give it to me, I would make a committee. We would talk about the committee, we would talk about the process of picking, like the collection. And why that book, I mean, obviously I haven't, this is my first year here, so I have not been a part of picking any of the books that are in this district. But we would match it against those standards and then decide, like, does it meet the standards, does it not? And then let that parent know. And then we would create a list that they could, that can continually be looked at so that other parents can see if a book has been challenged because the law is to that, or I guess not the law, the rule is that a book can't be challenged for another, if it stays on the shelf, it can't be challenged for another two years from the date that it was challenged before. So there is a process for it.
All is there?
Good job, Ms. Sewald.
You're welcome to go home too.
For nominating a member, I actually reached out to a few different individuals just to try to see if anybody was interested. They considered it and I got a late word, I guess it was Monday, they were not. So I do not have anybody to nominate, but we posted this as of last week, so. But I don't have anybody to nominate, and I don't know if you guys have anybody that's interested in nominating.
Talked to a few that said on the review board, they seem to all be generous, Roger stepping off, Roger, Mr. Clark.
And then the next item, we placed the board operating procedures for you guys to review. You guys, we have adopted this, I don't even remember, I'm sure the year's on there, but a couple of years ago, a couple of years back. You guys should kind of review the procedures and if there's any adjustments and those kind of things. If y'all wanted to bring those back for the next meeting, you can put that on there, on the agenda. If you want to wait, you know, like, any of the next month, that's fine, but you'll just share that with Jerry and we'll go from there. Wanted you guys to be able to see that and then get back to some more changes. Any adjustments? No, there's nothing to do, I just wanted you to have that in there. And then the last is consider agreement for pro care therapy. It's your special programs director here, she can share with us. This is an agreement with pro care therapy for a tent, the contract is for, and I'm sorry I came out and said that last name. Stephanie Asik, did I say it?
Rogers.
Consultant name and discipline.
Rogers is on her resume.
Oh, I got you. Fair enough. But I'll let you explain what we're.
Well, we had a life skills teacher to resign on August twenty-eighth and effective immediately. We, let's kind of back up, we had zero applicants for that position all summer long. And so we had a special ed teacher who we had hired for ECS, the Early Childhood Special Ed. And so communicated and talked to her through the summer and said, we don't have any applicants for life skills. Really kind of need you over here, we have somebody else that could do the ECS. And she said she was willing to do it and so continued to have conversations through the summer with her. And so she was the one that was in that life skills classroom. So she got in there and we supported her, we had people from special ed to go in. Julie Nelson, the special ed counselor, behavior counselor, Randy Beckham, we were in there very frequently, daily. And that day, she just said it wasn't what she wanted to do. So she was, she resigned effective immediately. So again, we have zero applicants and so we've basically just been having subs in there and paras and rotating and rotating. We have a life skills physician at the middle school who, we have no teacher there either, nor any applicants. But the students that we have in the program at the middle school are mainstreamed into the middle school and they are being very, very successful. Those gen ed teachers are phenomenal with those kids. I cannot say enough about how they have just opened their arms to those kids and we're providing support. We've got special ed case managers, but we have those kids, the life skills kids that are in gen ed classes and being successful. So the proposal is that, and it's very expensive, I truly understand that. And trust me, I'm as frugal as they come and I would not ask for this if it was not the last resort. We interviewed teachers and this is the teacher, she is in the DFW area. And she's got ten years' teaching experience. She will be teaching at LSK in the life skills classroom. She will be like the teacher of record from special ed for those middle school kids as well. And so with that, we can have one teacher for those two life skills classrooms, if you will. So it's not like, we're still going to leave the life skill positions available, open. And I asked them if we were to get somebody, say in December, from Sagu or Nelson, that, you know, if they graduated in December and we could find a teacher, if we would be able to get out of the contract. And she said we shouldn't, they needed like two weeks' notice to try to get the teacher placed somewhere else, but they would let us get out of that contract. So again, we're going to leave those positions open, but we have zero applicants in those.
And in fairness, I came to her and said, what's our next best option? This is our next best option.
This is, to have a certified teacher, we don't have any. And I've never had to do this for a special ed teacher. This, I'm kind of in uncharted territory, but I understand that I'm not the only one in special ed. As a director, I talked to people at the directors meeting at Region Ten on Thursday. And it's tough, it's, we're in tough times. In a life skills classroom, they, you've got students with more severe needs and it requires a lot from those staff members.
A question about the contracts, I know it's expensive, but is there, are we, do we have a bike system in place? I was looking just at overtime rate to mitigate, to make sure that someone's not spending two hours a day overtime. Or is that something you plan on there, going, we're going to have to.
She's being paid for eight hours a day. And that is it. And we do not pay if she is not here. So if we had to get a sub, it would be no different from us getting a sub for another teacher because we don't pay if she's not here.
And this, we also asked the question, just so you know, we interviewed this person. They don't roll out their best person and hire them and then they change the person, was a concern of mine. And I said, no, this is the person you're hiring, you're dating this person.
We interviewed her and I had four people interviewing with me and Ms. Beckham was one of those as well. So I mean, we gave, you know, we, specific questions regarding life skills and we did like her. She was the one we chose.
And this is, this covers everything at that rate, there's no friend or anything else?
This is our fee and it's just a cut and dry fee until we are able to hire someone or until the end of the year. Now, remember we have the two salaries built into the budget if we are able to hire someone. Or even two people, by the app, we're still derailing our budget.
You said other district are doing, haven't did the same thing, then I could result with this company.
I've talked, you know, I've spoken to others around and this is a very reputable company. I did, I was able to negotiate it, four dollars less an hour than they originally said. I said, okay, we're a small district and we have limited resources. And so, I mean, you know, obviously they're in business and they want our business. But they have been, I will say, working with Katie as the manager that I've been working with. When I text or call or email, it's probably within five minutes that I hear from her. And so I like that. Of course, they're trying to get our business, obviously, but I mean, I've got her cell phone, her personal cell phone. She's been very, very open with communication and I've been pleased with that.
You may not know the answer to this, but this is a, this is a major issue for the whole state of Texas, right? Is there going to be a chance that the state has extra resources or they'll do something to help out? Do you know, have any talks like that?
I do not know about that, I mean, I know that they're giving, you know, a house. I mean, I know that they're giving, you know, House Bill 2, talk to, you know, they're giving more funding for evaluations and things. But this area right here is a huge area and, you know, I mean, we give a stipend here for teachers who are life skills teachers. It's just, it's just a really, it requires a lot. And so until the state does step in and give more funding for that, I can't answer that.
Historically, it's been underfunded by the. So this is a very difficult position. And I understand it's a reputable company, it is a contracted person. You guys, I'm sure there's background checks and everything else that goes with this. If there happens to be an incident, because it happens from time to time, we don't like it, but it does, we got to be prepared. If something happens with this contracted employee that does something that is not reputable, right? Who's liable for that?
Well, I asked about that. And basically, we terminate. If we are not happy, we contact them and we find somebody else.
If it's something that is a situation that we have, we would follow, say, protocol. As far as, you know, contacting CPS, all the. If you've got, if you've got to do that, that's all the time. Yeah, yeah, I just.
But actually, even, even, we would do what we would with any other employee, for sure. You go through that process, but even beyond that, if we, if it's just not a good fit, then we can say, I can say, it's not a good fit. We would like to look for somebody else. And she said, absolutely. So that made me feel much better. No, I mean, you're exact. No, I mean, I'm just saying, when you get somebody in here, every district is different, every campus is different. You know, so you get in here and like, okay, she's not working out with us. Or these students, it's just not happening. So I said, you know, what if it's not a good fit? And she said, if it's not a good fit, then we'll find somebody else. If you have any other questions, please ask, because I'm like I said, uncharted territory for me. We do contract with Superior for OT and PT, but that's not on a daily basis, you know, eight hours a day with our students. So I take it very seriously, I know it is a lot of money. It makes me hurt to stand here and ask you this. It makes me hurt actually more that we don't have any applicants. That really makes me hurt. Because we've got great kids and they deserve somebody to be in there that wants to be in there. So this lady does. And so we're going to hope that this is going to be the fit until we can get somebody in there.
Is this a full year?
I said until the end of the school year unless we were able to hire somebody before.
I just don't.
Make a motion to adopt an agreement with pro care therapy for special ed teacher for the contract term stated.
Further discussion?
Move. On paper?
Thank you very much. Our kids appreciate that too.
It is 8:40, we are going into closed.
eleven thirty seven we are out of posts.
Make a motion here.
We cannot, we have to make another motion first. Sorry. All right, I make a motion to a doctor approve the active threat annex.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope, great, all four, all approved. Now somebody.
Motion turn.
All right.
Third, third.
What's your approval?
Don't take your photos, don't make sure Mr. Kirby.